Good evening. I'd like to call to order our Monday, June 14th, 2021 Board Discussion Meeting. We will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting school corporation business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated on the agenda. All board members were presented with the background information to the various items on the agenda in preparation of this meeting. Our meeting is being livestreamed, and we do have public comment forms. If you would like to address the board at the appropriate time, public comment forms are up here at the end of the board table near Board Attorney Elwood. Please fill one out, return it to the board table, and you will be recognized at that appropriate time. So we're going to start off with some fun tonight. We have our Unified Track Presentation. Coach Strom, Coach O'Donovan, if you want to come up and present to the board.
Good evening. So I wasn't, I didn't prepare anything because I didn't know what I was talking. I'll just introduce the members of our team. I'm Todd Strom. This is Sheri Andrevich. Would I call your name if you could please stand up? Bryce Hufford. McIntyre Aldrich. Brooklyn Trinidad. Ava Melendez. Don Monet Thomas. Lilly Haddix. Grace Fisher. Mila Menchaca. And Javier Gonzalez. So this is our inaugural season, as you guys are well aware. Hoping to add some more sports in the future. I guess since I'm up in front of you, I can at least bring that to your attention now. That is something that we want to sit down with the athletic department and hopefully be able to add another sport or two in the next few years. I thought this year with everything taken into consideration, we had 14 members on our team, which was just as big as pretty much every team that we went up against this entire season. I thought our kids did a heck of a job. We got fourth place at regionals. Out of 12 teams, we were one spot off, or at sectionals, I'm sorry. We were one spot off of going to the regional. We missed out by three points. So it was a very good first season, but more than just, I think where we finished, having some of our kids have the opportunity to do something that they haven't really had that opportunity to do before was, was awesome to watch and be a part of. So thank you guys for, I know that was a couple of years in the works, so I really appreciate you guys bringing this to Portage and allowing us to have a team this year. So thank you for that. I believe there is a video, so I guess we're good to watch that now.
So Unified Track and Field is students with disabilities and without disabilities that come together and practice together, train together. And the best part is if you go to a meet, you won't be able to identify who is a partner and who is an athlete. There's nothing on the back of the uniform stating this. There's nothing on any kind of pamphlet handed out at the meet. It's just a bunch of kids getting together and competing against other schools.
We start off with, we usually meet in one of our classrooms and we go over what we're doing for the day. If we have any changes to our meet schedules, we review that. And then we go out to the field and we do stretches, we practice our events, we get together, and we just have a good time.
We do the 100, the 400, the 4x100 meter relay, long jump, and shot put. So we work on everything in practice. Shot put, luckily, we have former state champion and LSU grad Torrey Bliss helping with shot put, Coach Rail. The track team itself has really helped us out a lot as far as a individual, you know, 100, 4x100 meter relay, long jump perspective.
I think my ultimate goal for them, getting something out of this, is just having an experience that they wouldn't have normally had, both the partners and the athletes. I think it's a great experience for all of them to learn how to work with other people, get a, get a different idea of what sports are.
I joined Unified Track because I just love seeing the kids be so happy and do something that they love. And I just love helping people out. I have learned that even when you're at your lowest, you just want to give up. All your friends are there just to cheer you up and just bring you to the top. And it's great to have all those people to support you.
My team, everyone, my team. Track, maybe, maybe fun, yeah.
Because I like to run because they can give energy out.
I just usually do cross-country and track and stuff. Guess I like competing.
I just love how much fun we all have together and how kind and supportive everybody is. It's a really nice group of people and we're all just a fun team.
I joined Unified Track and Field because I just thought it was something different to do, so I gave it a try. It's fun to just kind of work with everyone and like get to know everyone. That's probably what I like the most about it.
Well, it's, I love the track. I guess I love being as, as, I was shy at everywhere else.
It is because I love it to run because I like it. I like running football. I like to be bad.
I love interacting with them and making new friends and making them laugh. I've learned that friendship is important.
And I like running the whole lap of it. It's kind of fun.
I was in peer tutor and I got like the form about it and I thought it'd be cool to do.
I like being able to like interact with everyone and just have like a good time.
I learned that it's important to like cheer people on and just be supportive for everyone.
Well, I was just in health and Mr. Strom gave me this paper and I was like, why not? I ran my, my whole life, but I never ever like wanted to go to track before, so I wanted to try Unified before the actual thing, and that's why I'm here.
I've learned to be encouraging to each other and always pick each other up when we're tired and not feeling like doing stuff. I love the teamwork and everyone who's doing it. I mean, it's, it's a family here, so I enjoy it.
A lot of people told me that it was a great opportunity and I was looking forward to it because I didn't have a strength for it. I honestly love all the kids because it is a family and it's just super fun and encouraging.
I've learned to be patient and to laugh more and to encourage.
We could all take a lot from this, myself included. You know, selflessness, how to be a leader. Seeing people maybe that don't have the same opportunities that you may get and, and working with them and being friends with them and seeing things from different perspectives. Maybe not taking things so seriously and just enjoying things as they come.
I think I learn as much as they do every week. I laugh at them. I laugh with them. They usually laugh at me. So just there's, they're a big family. We're always laughing. They're cheering each other on. To see the student who was quiet at the beginning of our season now is being one of the loudest and most vocal, cheering somebody else on, it's just a wonderful thing.
I think it's been a success. Considering we got hired about a week before we could start practice in the middle of a pandemic with zero team to having 14 people, we can field a full team for sectionals. Haven't missed anything, been to every meet, no rainouts. You know, we've been hit with a lot of things, quarantine injuries, but the kids keep just coming back and it's been, it's been a success. Look forward to next year.
I think if you have the opportunity to come and watch it, it's something that you would never regret seeing.
Ready? Portage, go! Three!
One, two, three, Portage!
Thank you, coaches. Thank you, team. It's, that's a pretty awesome program. And to start off the inaugural season with 14 members, and I'm sure that's going to continue to grow, and you guys will always be the first, so that's pretty cool. So congratulations on a great season. Anybody from the board have any comments?
I'd also like to thank the parents for supporting their children. And the words that I kept hearing, I heard the words fun, leadership, interacting with others, peer tutoring, teamwork, laugh, family, patience, and the best word I heard was love.
I think this is another example of the, the opportunities to try to expand what all students have available to them. When we talk about equity, this is just a prime example of that. And now we have the Sparkle Chair and now we have Unified Track. And as Coach Strom and Coach Andrevich had stated, we are looking to expand that even further. Same thing with our esports. It's another opportunity that kids did not have prior to that existing. And you know, we, we have Mr. Thompson and various others and Mr. Di Pasquale who really got that off the ground. And there are hundreds of kids that are benefiting from having those opportunities. They may not be competitive on a field per se in person, but they really like the gaming. They, they, we had kids who've said they've never participated in any extracurricular or co-curricular opportunities. So this is just another great example of how we can invest in our students and see where there are holes in our programming across all levels throughout the district to make certain that we are providing equitable opportunities for kids and access to the things that they enjoy.
Awesome. Thank you.
No, Dr. Alanes, though the words were out of my mouth, is just the social inclusion through sports and then all the other activities. And it is so good to see young people encouraging one another because, you know, sometimes we do get into situations where it's a lot of negativity. So I'm excited to see that there are a lot of positives that are coming out of the esports and, and Unified Track and Sparkle and looking forward to what's going to happen for years to come. So thank you all for participating in the programs, especially with your parental support. So great job to the teachers as well. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I would just say it's one of the best things I've seen in a long time, so thank you to all those involved.
Okay, well, normally, under normal times, we'd shake your hands. I don't know if you guys would like to come up and maybe your coaches or someone, someone to get the families to get an opportunity to take a photo of you all together. You're welcome to come do that.
Uh-uh, they're all looking now. They're like, we don't know.
That's up to you, coaches, if you would like to have the team do that.
I had Javier at vaguely as a sixth grader.
Oh, did you? Yeah. Oh, she's up there. That's cool.
You guys got a lot of fans out there.
Yeah, the teachers should have got in it. The teachers, they didn't get in it. I didn't know the teachers wanted to get in it. Yeah. They're all gone now. Love it, love it, love it.
Now, I think there's a lot of great stuff on our agenda for the rest of the meeting. For some of us, it might be interesting. For others of you, it might feel pretty boring. So you don't have to stick around if you don't want to, but we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda is our recognition of our substitutes. Dr. Alanes.
I wanted to personally thank the, the guest teachers that we have grown to love and are part of our Portage Township Schools family over the years. And through that, I realized that never before has this group of important individuals been brought before the board for any type of recognition. And although, you know, I can look out there and see you and know you by name, but again, it was not something that pre-pandemic has occurred. And moving forward, I want to make certain that these individuals are recognized for their hard work and their contributions to our students socially, emotionally, and of course academically as well. You know, there's that layer of consistency that can be provided by having these folks on our team. The quarantines that took place throughout the school year that were completely unexpected, yet they were still a familiar face in that classroom when students had, had lost their teacher for the two weeks that he or she may have been out. I want to mention to you that throughout this school year and during this pandemic, they have covered collectively over 1,542 classroom assignments. It's a huge undertaking. It takes a lot of flexibility on their part. They may arrive and find out that their placement for the day has changed. And they are just always willing to do whatever it takes to help us out. They truly are a part of what we do, and I could not thank them enough. If you wouldn't mind coming up and sharing your name with each, with us, and then I would like to also share just how many different assignments you've, you've taken on. Because some of you, wow. And then again, others who maybe only took on a few assignments. They took on long-term assignments, or they picked them up when they had the opportunity, or they saw we were in a pinch. And then we do have a little just token of appreciation for each of you who is here. Mr. Lampton, you want to get us started? You looked right at me. You're welcome.
Dave Lampton. I am strictly middle school. Once in a while, high school. Never elementary school. I, I tell the kids, those kids scare me, but the truth of the matter is that an elementary teacher has to be so organized and teaches and flops from one thing to another, and that's just not my personality. This is my 16th year of subbing only in Portage and my 55th year of education.
Yes. I will tell you, many of these folks also were, and I'm looking at Mr. Lampton, thinking of how much he loves middle schoolers because during the pandemic, when we were partnering with Real Life Community Church, he was in between all sorts of middle school curriculum and was enjoying every minute of it while my head was just spinning. All right, Ms. Sherman.
I'm Sharon Rae Sherman, and unlike him, I'm in the elementary business. And I taught for Portage for 40 years, and I've been subbing now for at least 15. And I had Amanda's husband in kindergarten many years ago. He was probably my all-time favorite.
Mine too.
That's good. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Joyce Artucci, and I've been a substitute in Portage for eight years and a substitute overall for 11 years. And it's been an unprecedented year for me as well as you guys. We just muddled through and did the best that we could and tried to be at the places that we were needed. I know I'm all over the place, from preschool to high school. So wherever I was needed is where I go. So thank you and we appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Joyce.
Hi, my name is Judy Shear, and I sub as secretary for about the last three years. But I did sub in 95, no, 96 to 98, mostly at Willow Creek and Study Hall. And then I left for a while and came back. And I still do Study Hall, Media Clerk, and Secretary, mostly Secretary this year, and Study Hall at Willow Creek.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bev Cle, and I've been subbing, this is my 15th year. I, I don't sub a lot, but I sub here and there wherever is needed, and I enjoy doing it. And I hope to do it, be able to do it a few more years. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Nicole Podgorsky, and I've been subbing for about five years now, mostly just elementary school. And because of it, I decided to pursue a career in teaching, so, because I love it. Thank you.
So again, I can't thank you enough for those of you who are here or those who are watching the livestream or may watch in the near future. We do have a substitute recognition, small token of our appreciation, which could never go as far as what you do for us on a daily basis. But we are truly grateful and look forward to continuing to have you as a part of our PTS family. Mrs. Langren, do you happen to know where those are located? Okay, they are on the front table for you to be able to take your little token. And, and remind me, I know they had, what was in there? Yes, as much as you could possibly imagine, hand sanitizer. And just as President Malata had mentioned, if you guys need to get going, we understand.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you for what you did this year. Obviously, yeah, this was an unprecedented year, and the work that our substitutes did was absolutely invaluable to keeping the school corporation going and our, and our kids being taken care of. And thank you, Dr. Alanes, for thinking and bringing to the board the recognition of our substitutes. Because it's the first time since I've been on the board that, that's, that's happened and never more deserving than it is now. So we appreciate you doing that. Thank you. And as Dr. Alanes says, you don't have to stay. You're welcome to, but you're also welcome to go on and enjoy the rest of your evening. So thank you.
And while they're walking out, Mrs. Lampton subbed with us a very long time also as a secretary. So she was, she's been a great help through the years. So good to see you too.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we have our capital projects and summer project update from Mr. Marovic. Mila, you look like you've been busy.
He did ask me if there was going to ever be a summer that we're not doing projects.
No. Let's hope not.
Mr. President, board members, Dr. Alanes, thank you for allowing me to share this update with you. This report is divided in four groups. Portage High School East renovation project, Capitol projects, bond projects, building and grounds, department internal projects. Portage High School East renovation project, I'm going to start with, the pool looks amazing. If you haven't had the chance to see it, I highly recommend it. It looks great. We're near the end of this project and most importantly, within the budget. Currently, in the substantial completion stage, work scheduled for the next couple of weeks include the following: pool startup, staff training, punch list, test and balance, video display board training, deck accessories, final cleaning, and a final inspection. Finish and delivery of this project is expected to be on July 7th, 2021. We're close. Capitol projects, our main focus and goal is to address the critical needs, maintain and improve safety and security of our schools, as well as upkeep of our buildings and grounds. As of now, 15 projects from our 2020 Capitol project list have been awarded with a total cost of $975,348. These projects range in various stages of construction: awarded, started, delayed, and completed. Additional seven of our Capitol projects with the estimated cost of $465,000 have been moved to district bond projects. Bond projects, these projects are divided into six groups. Two of these projects, roof replacement in elementary schools, Crispin, Central, Kyle, and Myers, and the mechanical upgrades at the Portage High School rooftop unit replacement leaks, Dr. Moore, have been recommended and approved by the board last week. Part of these projects will start later this month. Next two projects, LED lighting upgrade at, at all elementary schools and Portage High School West, pool, learning center renovation, relocation of our high school main offices, elementary school media center improvements, and gym floors replacement has been presented to a board last Monday for approval to advertise. Building and grounds internal projects, we're currently assisting with the relocation of student and employee clinics at the high school, addressing fire and martial school inspection reports, transportation compound, energy efficiency, lighting upgrade, and applying for NIPSCO efficiency incentive for related and qualified projects. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but boy, that's, that's an awful lot. And I know Mila, over the years, you've been on top of these projects. You've been, you've always managed to deliver on time and, and on budget as you are doing here. So thank you for all your hard work. And these are great improvements. These are all things that are extremely necessary. Our buildings are aging, and so, you know, thank you to my, my fellow board members for the leadership in getting and securing the funds, and Dr. Alanes and her team for presenting that to us. And then Mila, for you being able to carry these out and, and deliver on all the promises that we're making to our, our taxpayers every day when we spend this money. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will we be able to schedule some tours throughout the summer?
So my intent was, we were looking at trying to get a tour in at least quarterly. And then, so that is actually on my list. We were going to be talking about that. As, especially as now some construction will be amping up in other places, yeah. Because we've done, was it two tours of the pool since that had started, so we'll continue. And then we did the tour at South Haven, so we'll, we'll continue those. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our good news report.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be celebrating our student achievements over the past month. The Portage High School choirs were awarded the All Music Award by the Indiana State School Music Association. They are one of 14 high school choir programs in the state to receive this award this year. Students participated in virtual concerts and solo and ensemble festivals in both the fall and the spring semesters and received gold ratings at each of those events to qualify the high school for this award. It speaks to our students' passion, drive, and love of singing even in the most difficult of times. We are so proud of our choir students. Our Portage High School junior girls recently competed in the Class of 2022 Distinguished Young Women Scholarship Program. Congratulations to all of the participants and to our award winners. The Handley Award was presented to Madeline Davis. The Joe Stevens Award was presented to Jovi Taylor. The Spirit of DYW Award was presented to Kaitlyn Mitchell. Reagan Quanones earned the third runner-up spot. Alexandra Ramona earned second runner-up. Kaitlyn Mitchell earned first runner-up. And your Class of 2022 Distinguished Young Woman is Sarah Torres. Congratulations to all. Portage High School junior Logan Reese is a top 10 finisher at the Business Professionals of America National Competition. Reese participated in the Virtual National Conference on May 8th and took sixth place in business law. He previously took first place in the same category He previously took first place in the same category at the state competition earlier this school year. Congratulations to Logan on earning this prestigious national award. Congratulations also goes to our Class of 2021 athletes who signed their letters of intent to play collegiate sports at their respective schools next year. Bobby Russell will attend Mars Hill University for Acrobatics and Tumbling. Zach Laskowski will attend Grace College for Baseball. Dani Poplava will attend Kankakee Community College for Baseball. Tristan Wilkie will attend Purdue University Northwest for Baseball. Jacob Gonzalez will attend Calumet College of St. Joseph for Baseball. Mark Foster will also attend Calumet College of St. Joseph for Baseball. Diamond Howell will attend Lemoine Owen College for Basketball. Haley Chalich will attend Purdue University for Cheerleading. Morgan McCulloch will attend Ball State University for Cross Country. Miles Cisco will attend Marion University for Track and Field. Emily Cragan will attend Valparaiso University for Track and Field and Cross Country. Jaden Lowe will attend Drury University for Track and Field. Owen Pittman will attend Marion University for Track and Field. Julius Hearns will attend Wabash College for Track and Field. Tyler Herring will attend North Central University for Wrestling. And Alex Cornejo will attend Marion University for Wrestling. We have three students at Ilsworth Elementary School who achieved a perfect score on their I-Read assessment, and this is no easy task. So, a huge congratulations goes out to Avery, Jacey, and Madison on this huge achievement. Congratulations to Portage High School freshman Kiana King on earning third place in this year's Indiana Martin Luther King Junior Essay Competition. Although hesitant to write an essay for school, Kiana felt inspired by the topic, which asked her to react to a quote from Dr. King. We are so proud of her for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations to all of our highlighted students this evening. You certainly make us Portage proud.
Thank you. As always, many great things going on with our students and our buildings. Okay, next we have our Agenda Adjustments. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the Board? No? Okay, we'll move on to Board Development. Any Board Reports?
The Education Foundation met last week, and we will be beginning the planning of the special event that's going to take place in October. More information will be forthcoming. The Board will now be meeting in July.
Great, thank you. Any other Board Reports?
I'll give just a little update on the parks. Just a reminder that our Market Movies and Music is happening at Founder's Square every Friday from three to nine with a movie at dusk. This Friday's movie is Field of Dreams, and the musical act is Slick Moss. We also have our Cruise Nights every Tuesday night at Woodland Park from four to eight p.m. And we also have four weeks of camps in July that you can check out our website. We still have a few spots open there if you want to register.
Great, thank you. Any other reports from the Board? Okay, next we'll move on to our Superintendent's Consent Agenda, which has the approval of the Personnel Report for June 14th, 2021, the Donation Report from June 14th, 2021, and a Facility Use Request Report. Do we have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none, call roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Now, we have our Board Consent Agenda, which contains our meeting minutes of our regular Board Meeting from May the 24th, and meeting minutes of the Special Board Meeting for the Bid Awards from June the 7th. Do we have a motion to approve the Board's Consent Agenda?
I make a motion to accept the Board Consent Agenda.
A second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none, call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
We have no old business this meeting, but we do have some new business. First up, we have the approval of the overnight field trip by the Portage High School Boys and Girls Straight Estate Track Championships in Indianapolis, which took place on June 4th through 6th. Do we have a motion to approve the overnight field trip?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? How'd we do?
I can get that to you tomorrow. It's a really good question.
I think I read in the paper, I think we did pretty good.
Yeah, I don't have the stats on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Call roll, please.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of the MOU for Marketing. Do I need to read this, Mr. Elwood?
No, you don't need to read it, I can explain it. This is simply transferring the responsibilities for the city side of things, because it's a joint venture between PTS City of Portage and Portage Township Trustees. So, they're shifting their responsibility from the Sanitary Board to the City of Portage General Fund, which is frankly where it should have been to begin with. But because of some things going on between the Council and Mayor previously, it got set as the Utility Services Board Responsibility, so.
So, it really doesn't change anything other than where their funding comes from?
Yep.
The only other remark I'd make there is that last, last year, calendar year, we did not have the MOU in place. So, we did not receive any of that fifteen thousand dollar funding from the city that year. Of course, we still did our best to continue to partner as we always should, and that's actually when the Initiative Portage Strong came about. But moving forward, the Mayor was very specific in wanting to get this back in order. And of course, we've worked, as you would expect for us, to work closely with the city and the township to make certain that those things move forward.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the MOU for Marketing?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Now, we have the approval of the Dual Credit Spanish Course for Portage High School.
Yes, this is just for the opportunity for our students to receive dual credit for their Spanish courses at Portage High School.
Do we have a motion to approve the Dual Credit Spanish Course?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Now, we have the acceptance of the Project Lead the Way Grant Funds.
This is the opportunity for us to accept the funds from these grant opportunities. Vately Middle School received seven hundred dollars to be used for the purchasing of equipment needed for the Computer Science Component of the Gateway Program. And Portage High School received a one thousand five hundred dollar grant for the purchase of equipment at the Portage High School Computers, excuse me, for the Portage High School Computer Science Program.
Very good, we have a motion to approve the Project Lead the Way Grant Funds.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none, call roll, please.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Item 8.05, Approval of Advisors, Counselors Join the USW Group.
So, currently, we have four groups. We have Transportation, Custodial, Food Service, and Support Staff. There are some employees out there, particularly these eleven, ten school advisors and a social worker, social worker, I believe, is at the high school. They have gathered and desire to join the United Steelworkers, and they have obtained a majority of the signatures. And I recommend it to the Superintendent that we make that process easier for them, which we can contest it, or we can simply welcome them in and allow them to bargain, just like they do for the other support staff. So, the idea is if the Board approves this, then we would begin, we bargain a new contract with the USW Groups this year that we just begin bargaining them as part of the support staff contract. There's a different pay, so there'll be a different addendum, but a lot of the same language issues will be negotiated. And I believe we talked about it being effective January 1, 2022, because that's when the new contract for the four groups will start.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve of advisors and counselors joining the USW Group?
Make a motion.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Great. Next, we have the approval of the Resolution for Residential Placement Designee.
This is a resolution that we bring before the Board every year, and this is so that in the event that there is a need for residential placement for any student within Portage Township, that I have the Board's authority as the designee to sign off on that residential placement. This is always in cooperation with the Porter County Education Services that we receive, and typically, we're talking about one or two students who are in this situation and need that type of placement.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the Resolution for the Residential Placement Designee?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion? Very none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Milata.
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Okay, next we have our Superintendent Reports and Updates. Dr. Alanes.
Quickly, I was able to get some information for you regarding Track and Field. Gina Butts qualified for state and finished fourteenth. So, that was that overnight field trip. Thank you to Mrs. Deverslawi for that quick information. I also wanted to extend congratulations to Trustee Vasquez on her recent retirement.
Thank you.
How many years?
Forty-four.
That's what I thought, forty-four years. Congratulations.
You're not even old enough to be retired. You've worked for forty-four years.
So, congratulations to you.
It's been a wonderful journey, and I am honored that I will continue my journey serving on this Board.
Yes. I also wanted to share a couple of items with you. First of all, on the Personnel Report, you'll notice there was a lot of hiring that has been taking place. We are using some of those Essar dollars that you're going to be receiving, a presentation about some of those allocations and what we're looking to do at that, at the next Board Meeting, as I had shared with you in last week's update. One of the things we're working to do is class size reduction, making certain that we are having manageable class sizes for teachers so that they can best meet the needs of our students. And so, a lot of that hiring was also to try to determine where those pockets were at the elementary levels so that we could best address those needs. And we are also looking at providing additional supports with certified teaching staff as well as classified staff so that we have remediation assistance. So, we have had a great deal of success in finding really quality candidates. So, we are hiring them up so that no one else has that opportunity. I also want to express my appreciation for the planning and the implementation of the start of summer school. As you know, Session One is taking place at the high school, as well as elementary and middle school, regular summer school, and our pre-K summer school that we have in place. So, it has been a great start, as you can only imagine. You're talking about food service plans, transportation plans, communication, which school, what, it's a lot. The kids are enjoying themselves, the teachers are coming up with, not surprisingly amazing, opportunities to engage our students and give them the remediation they need. I want to acknowledge the entire administration team. We had our Board Retreat, I'm sorry, not Board Retreat, Leadership Retreat last Thursday. I want to thank Lori, she allowed us to have that through our partnership agreement. We were able to be at the lakefront. It was a beautiful setting for a lot of opportunity to build as a team, to streamline and prioritize, and we, as a group, have been reading a book entitled Arrows, and it's all about aligning process and practice, prioritizing people and employees over programs. And it's been a great opportunity for us to bring some clarity to our vision, and I will be sharing some of that with you in the near future. The Projects and Bonds work, of course, our CFO, Nick, who does a phenomenal job with making certain that we continue to have that bond rating and with your oversight as well, and Milay for his continuous work, as you mentioned. He truly is just a great gentleman who is extremely respected throughout the district, and rightfully so, and someone that I lean on regularly for his input. Also, we are planning to submit some additional proposals to present again for NSBA. We've been on a roll, so that's in the works as well, and I'll keep you posted. As I shared with you last week, the I-Lern results, we are not seeing comparisons across the state yet, those are still embargoed, and we are unaware of what those results are going to look like in those comparisons. But we are definitely diving into the reports and plan to develop some opportunities to inform instruction based on those areas of need that we have and how those common assessments can look across the district. The Back to School Plan is going to be coming before you again, and fortunately, we won't have to do a lot of the pre-education components of that. So, we will be updating that. I've started to receive some word from both the state and local health department on some additional guidance, the guidance that will not overstep necessarily the Governor's order, but that the CDC guidelines, if they extend beyond the Governor's orders, then that is where we have that local control and determination to decide what we want to do. So, I will be giving you some suggestions and some recommendations, and I get that to you for your approval, or, excuse me, your consideration. I also wanted to mention that, there was one other item. Oh, I asked, I met with Mr. Deverswally today, and he was going to give just a very brief update about the STEM Champ Camp that's going on. It's been a great thing that, you know, we've done for the last several years, and he had some exciting things to share with you.
Mr. President, Mr. Elwood, members of the Board, Dr. Alanes, thank you. I'm blessed every year to be the coordinator of the STEM Champ, STEM Camp. This is our third year. First year that we did it was in person, then last year we did it virtually, and we're back in person. And what I wanted to state to you guys is what I think is the most exciting thing. We invite ten students from every elementary school, which means we invite eighty fourth graders to join us, and with great excitement, we had seventy-nine participate, which I think the most important is, thing for you guys to know, is the confidence our students, our parents have in what Portage Township Schools is doing, especially in regards to returning back to normal. It has been just a breath of fresh air for myself and the fellow staff members to be participating with these students, who are so excited to be getting back to serious, hands-on activities. We are doing many activities, including a Bottle Rocket Challenge, where they're making two-liter bottles into rockets. Cardboard Chair Challenge, where they're just taking cardboard and having to make a chair that holds up myself and the other staff members, which is a lot of fun that kids enjoy. We're doing programming along with 3D printing. They've been making their own pencil holders, where they actually designed in AutoCAD and developed those, and that's fourth graders, which is, which really is impressive. We have Robotics Programming Challenge, where the students have to move a maze, of course, through with RVRs, which are kind of like Spheros. You may have seen Spheros before, the robotic programmable balls, but there's a new one that looks more like a tank called RVR doing that. And so, it's been, so far, we're in Week Two. It's going to finish up at the end of this week. And it's just been a real blessing to have these students part of this program on what it leads to in the future. And I just wanted to come to tell you guys that it's been, we're just eternally grateful for these opportunities with our students. As I said, it was a breath of fresh air, and I know that the confidence that those parents and students have back in Portage Schools, and knowing that we have their best interests at heart, and making sure that we're doing good things for them is very evident. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Awesome. Anything else, Dr. Alanes?
No, that's it.
Okay, are there any items not on the agenda that the Board would like to bring up at this time? If not, I do believe we, did we get a public comment form?
We did. Jason Scott wishes to speak on curriculum and school policy. He is a resident of Portage.
Okay, just before he speak, I'll go ahead and just kind of lay out briefly some of the guidelines. General, School Board Meetings are not public meetings per se. They are simply meetings of the School Board to be held in public. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on corporation matters. To permit fair and orderly public expression by the Board may provide a period for public participation at those meetings of the Board, during which action may be taken. during which action may be taken and public procedures to govern such participation in board meetings. Here are some, just some of the rules for public participation. No discussion on personnel, legal, or executive content will be permitted, including collective bargaining. Public participation shall be permitted at the discretion of the presiding officer. Attendees must register their intention upon arrival. Only residents of Portage Township are permitted to participate. Each statement by the participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. You cannot speak more than once on the same topic, and all statements should be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members or the superintendent individually. Personal attacks are not pre-permitted, and a few other things, but we'll just move on from that. So, sir, please, would you go ahead and state your name and address for the record? And then, Trustee Williams will start our timer, and you can begin speaking.
I'll raise my hand above the fifteen seconds left.
All right. When are you going to start the timer now?
It's when you finish talking with, introducing yourself.
My name is Jason Scott. My address is 5660 Vanessa Avenue in Portage, and I am a Portage resident. The first thing, I want to know a few things before the start of the next school year. First, I want to know if our kids are going to have to wear masks next year. I think that's something that's fair to know. I also want to know why my daughter was forced to run in a color run in 82-degree weather with a mask on, when all kinds of doctors at prestigious American universities and hospitals have said this is detrimental to their health. I got a stack of studies on my desk, and I could print out a thousand more. So I want to know if they're going to have to wear masks and why they're wearing masks in the heat. And it's funny that I bring this up because my daughter just, my wife just took my daughter to the doctor and texted me 20 minutes ago, what was wrong? Her eye's been swelling up. And the reason never crossed my mind. The doctor said it's because she's wearing a mask. The only time she wears a mask is at STEM camp at Portage Schools in 90-degree heat. That's the only time she wears one. I'm just, I can't believe it. But anyway, moving on. Another thing that I'd like to know for the next school year is I want to know if Portage Schools is going to teach critical race theory, which teaches that white people are inherently racist and teaches the color of your skin matters and not the content or your character. So I want to know if Portage Schools is going to participate in that next year. The second thing I want to talk, or the third thing I want to talk about, is framing curriculum. It was told to my daughter this past school year and in her entire class, this is what was said. Republicans want to take money away from schools. Okay, well, that's one way to frame it. See, in my opinion, that's framing an opinion for our kids. So how are those 25 third- or fourth-graders or sixth-graders supposed to react, knowing that their parents could possibly be Republicans? I think, what, that's crazy. Why would anybody want to take money away from schools? Let me reframe it. By teaching critical race theory and having our kids wear masks and teaching anti-police curriculum like Portage Schools did, you're defunding yourselves. And I'm going to give you two statements in the curriculum. Imagine a third grader reading this. Just imagine it. In the wake of police killings and demanding an end to police violence, without giving specific examples, how are kids, third graders, supposed to react to this? I'm telling you guys, everybody up there, we're going to be undigging ourselves out of this hole for decades. We're raising a next generation of kids that are going to be disrespectful to police and everyone else, and it's going to create problems for all of us, all of us, by statements like this. So framing the police in a negative light, so let me frame that before you get ahead of it, because I know that's what you're going to do. Does the, do these statements paint police in a positive or negative manner? And that's it. That's the question. Those are the only questions I want answered.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have anything else or any other public comments, Mr. Elwood?
No, none others.
Okay, with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.